I'm Cooper Hesker, place of some practice.
That's right. We're going to follow the Lord's name today, Lord, clinging for us to be in here and for our health. I just believe in you, Lord. What I just asked you to do as Lord or supervisor, they make their decisions as Lord, what we got to do is run them down. What I just asked you to do with our service, with our personnel today, Lord, they like wanting their own thing, Lord. What I just asked you to do with that family will be with that department that it came from, Lord. What I just asked you to do with all the first responders, all the enforcement throughout, Lord, as they make decisions they have to do, what we have to do. I ask these things in your name.
All right, we've got, uh, Ms. Hesky.
I can give you a word to everything in order to serve you. Okay, my name is Annie Heskey, and I am the organist of the city's community. I don't know if y'all have heard of that before, but it's an activity for seniors and seniors. And she is the activity coordinator. And so we want to bring some places for you all to kind of look at and maybe partner with the city of the odds. So it's an American meeting very familiar with me because I've been physically with him several times.
Oh, yeah.
So I told him I was here to talk about him today. But anyway, I'm going to turn it over to she and she's going to get you all the course things that we have. And I also have some of the friends that you all can kind of look over.
Why don't you just give that out a little bit real quick? As a citizen of Union County, I appreciate everything that we have here as offered to our community as well as our senior community. Now, the economy is number six or retiring community, right? But looking at those statistics and percentages, 20% is 65 years of age and above. And so my question today was, how can the supervisors, um, partnership with the city to help meet our needs better? And by that, we would like to see a moving purpose building built, not necessarily built, but we have several establishments here that are empty, a partial empty, that can be redesigned to meet not just our needs, but other needs as well. We have veterans here. We know there's one place for veterans to make the, and that's a building with 400 veterans. How many of them actually being go there, um, uh, were staying to a particular building like we were talking about? We want to meet the mental, physical, and spiritual needs of these seniors as well as their loved ones. There's a lot of us. There's over 1,500 or 20% of the population of Union County. So when you look at that percentage, how many of those, and a lot of them are old, and come, I'm thankful, I'm far above it. However, there's a lot of things that they may not participate in because they don't have the funds to do. You might say, what? Okay, dinner, theater, some of that type of entertainment, anything non-religious, fellowship. Uh, we do utilize the library and Union County Heritage Museum on the days that we're not getting the time to go and just take what they have. We would like to see an area that we, we would have, whether it be, um, the city ride grant and have someone come in, like VanCorr Defensive Actors, I was up there, uh, he must have my son and Nigel Allen up there. And it is funded, I guess, through the state. So what is available that, you know, that we could work with and we get something like that from seniors of Union County? We have a lot of seniors that need transportation, okay? And I, we're not licensed people, but there are people who would come and participate. We, we do activities from writing activities, physical activities, we do cheer yoga, we do motion, we do those types of activities. But I feel like that we need someone who, and we do invite licensed people to come in and do activities with us. But there should be something available, and if it's already here or out of the circle, but available to the seniors that we could have counseling, uh, whether it be on finances or getting our last year of testimony completed, that type of, just daily things that we go along with. Water aerobics would be great for 65 and plus. And I'm not a who owns the other building where there was a pool, but, um, you know, there's a lot of benefits from a pool for senior citizens. Uh, flexibility, increasing our mobility, working in that area, cardiovascular disease, we have mental health, uh, stress and anxiety levels would decrease. And, um, the Happy Home, uh, would also get that first proof and help, uh, senior citizens, um, more alert and aware of their surroundings and things. But that was, that's basically, I think Annie handed out, uh, I have some more, uh, percentages and things, but you guys already know them. I don't have to reiterate those, but we would just like to see, uh, a building where, um, wellness and activities would provide holistic finance and air area for us. Whether that be hire a lot of rent and hire someone to come in or just help us financially to meet these needs. Uh, we have about 25 right now that's coming, um, I think we said five or six, maybe seven, um, communities that are coming. We would like to, we need help getting this out to people who say, hey, here we are, we're meeting two days a week, and this is what we do. Uh, our third day is for outings, like the library or the heritage museum or sometime we become involved, we can, we're trying to do things to keep people active. But having the money and means for that comes out of our pocket because we, we don't have any funds. We're not, uh, designated as a non-profit organization. We should bring up people trying to get there and trying to involve our agents and seniors, male and female. We have some of those and we have other people who would come, but we count a lot of transportation. So I think Annie has listed a bunch of a lot of things. If you have more questions, we're both available to grab. Thank you for that.
You know, my dad come off and he mentioned transportation, but they do, they are paid for it. And two people are on the COVID drag, and I think they're, they're funded by the state. And they also have on transportation plans that they serve. So we just hope that you all will, you know, take this under consideration because you all are our supervisors and you're made in a certain charity and assistance. That's what, you know, that's my opinion, so.
I think we get like young and pretty out here, I mean, out here, waiting that out.
And you make me feel good that you say your name. I don't know the name of it all enough that it's a moving purpose building. They're so good to me. And they, they have it set up really good. Yes. And they also, uh, serve wheel, and I think they're open all day long. Of course, they tried to get wheels on wheels here, but they couldn't find a facility to do. But I think people get very educated if you take the close side of people, because I went there and I know that it's ran by friends. And I want to link this, they may have three buses that they use for transportation. And that's been a few years back. Thank you all for taking the time to let us come on.
Uh, Mr. Ginnings submitted his appeal. Um, earlier, they were, um, submitted on July the 12th, 13th, the last meeting, as well as additional requests on Friday, Thursday, August 1st. So, um, my request is that I, they were known Union County Assessment Collector, their respectful petition, Union County Board Supervisor to preserve the assessment's true and fair value of a whole portion of the property. Their 19 South Central Avenue, I partially listed and I haven't enlisted. The land values that he was appealing, those values are given to us by the state. Those values are determined by, um, our state meetings, and we followed that to give him a pricing. Um, in his Thursday appeal, he requested information about the egress and egress of the parts of his garage. Those are not charged for the tax portion. So the land value would have a set, um, at $13,160. The buildings, he has his residence, uh, utility building, a Friday garage that he has, an apartment, a middle section which is just an empty garage, and then the last portion of his garage is used for his business. Um, we have this value, the assessed value, not the tax dollar, not the true value, but the building's at $861,260. And that was not one request that he can sustain or maintain and what we can help on the ground, Lord. I take it we're done. Union County Assessment Collector, their respectful petition, Union County Board of Supervisors to accept the decision to change the classification of Building 5, which is the garage apartment, and Building 6, which is the garage where it's empty, where it's empty. We don't have any findings there. This decision was determined after the special work of the board attorney to allow the taxpayer a class one assessment rate of 10% on those two official buildings since they are not being used for the business. I take it we're done. Union County Assessment Collector, their respectful petition for Union County Board of Supervisors to maintain the decision of the assessor's true and fair value of personal property for leading smart faces incorporated valued at $8,936. Again, that's assessed value, not tax dollars. I also petition for Union County Board of Supervisors to maintain the decision of the assessor to deny a request for industrial exemption for leading smart faces. This industry does not qualify based on the decision of the board in 2017. And that was that any industry that is applying for an exemption must employ full-time 10 employees for the extension of that exemption. And then the second request for freeport warehouse exemption for giving smart faces. He referenced Statute Code 273153 and 273155. He does not qualify for freeport warehouse exemption because he is producing, maintaining those, that production, not truly a warehouse, but he is keeping it there on the premises as well as retail selling from his business. And when you're doing those three things, you cannot qualify for a freeport warehouse because that warehouse must be different for where it's produced and where it's sold. Because that's under one roof, it will not qualify for freeport warehouse. Now, if you have any questions about those requests, I can, I can further explain. But most of his appeals are dealing with the cost of his destruction of his home. We don't go by what we think it costs. We have a state renewal and we have changed that in 2023. And that's how a lot of the cost, um, increased because of what the state mandated our county in 2023.
Last time, Mr. Ginnings showed what were most pictures of houses. You have any, have you taken any house pictures?
Can I ask you one quick question? You had mentioned that the property was assessed at $861,260.
That's, that's all the buildings.
Was it assessed or appraised?
Well, when you have something appraised, that can usually go by a loan for your mortgage. Appraising and assessment, you know, you can handle, but assessed is what we have to do because that's our requirement by the state. So that are similar, but they are different because you want your appraisal, your bank usually won't say it because they want to be money. They want to be money. They're certainly higher than the assessed value, which is what you're taxed on. And as a taxpayer, we, as the county, will take it with you. So we don't want it that high.
There was just a lot of talk about Class A, Class B, Class C homes last time we were doing the, doing this.
So we did a comparison. Um, we had about 10 homes that we looked at. I may need to move this back further so you can see it. I'm not sure. But these are some of the Class A homes. Now, Class A homes are, um, visually appealing. They, um, in our manual, I had a, a correct definition that might help you with that. But not only are they aesthetically pleasing, they have high quality, um, construction, but also when we go to physically see these homes, we have a property record card that is produced by the state, the Department of Revenue. And we have certain things that we look for, the amount of brick, the amount of, um, siding, the amount of board and batten. Those are given units, and those are all again given by the state with the C. Roof lines, roofing material, brick, how the brick lays on the house. Those are all things that are considered, and, um, that's what gives some of the pricing, the units. Here's our property record card. So an example would be, um, we know that Mr. Ginnings' home is brick, so it has 38 units, whereas Stucco would only have 32 units. Um, wallboard would only have 15 units. So we have applied the correct units for that. His rooftop, um, a hip style roof has nine units, a diagonal roof has eight units. So we're guided by this, um, what units to apply. And when you add up those units, we have a chart for classification units. He has 102 units, and that is Class A. So again, this is by the Department of Revenue restrictions that we have, that we have to give in that Class A home. A Class B would have 78 units for a roof plus. So he is an A home. The other homes, seats, all the things that are also A homes. Another question that Mr. Ginnings had, um, and I may note that for the garage apartment as well as the middle of the garage, um, not only do we have ladder classifications, we have a numerical classification, Class 1. Here's just a 10%, that is a single owner residence. Last year, he was classed as a two because his deed reflected two joint owners. He had that changed, so he never stated Class 1 this year. The classification for the layers for the A, we showed the other homes, saw how that was. Can't really see that chart, but Mr. Ginnings' home, um, central is, um, 7,000 square feet. I can't remember the exact number, and I can't say it, so I'll worry. Um, the square footage of a Class A home also puts into the pricing, the heating and air per square foot. Um, the plumbing is changed on a Class A home. All of that is generated from the information given to us by the Department of Revenue.
So big picture, what does all this mean for them? Like the tax, up, down, from what was it, what is it now?
It, it was up in 2023 because everything was considered a Class 2, 10% assessment. It is down because he produced a Class 1 on everything except the two that I called out for his business. And the concrete patio, um, was in on that as well as, yeah, those were all two. The garage where he does his business and the patio behind it where he stores some of his materials. Those have received a Class 2. Everything else had Class 1, 10%.
Dollar wise, it's a difference, much easier.
For the tax dollars or the taxes.
Real money.
Real money. Now, I know that I did that for the real money. I did what dated at one time, and I don't quote beyond exact, but maybe it was 16,000 last year. You would go down to 14,000 this year. I don't know the extras, but just around about dollars.
There was also something about partial property, some, I don't know, double, he was double bill for partial property.
So, um, Mr. Ginnings provided a asset list, which goes along with the partial property rendition. And he questioned the duplication of lasers. He had two lasers on his asset list that he provided two separate dollar amounts. Um, we took that at those values. We didn't ask for invoices from the law like counties do. We took it at those values that he provided the correct information, the correct price and the correct figures for us to apply depreciation. He then had that, said we duplicated it. If he disposed of one, he can provide that on the 2025 or for property rendition as an disposal. The second part was that we duplicated shelving. When we had our required official visit for a new business, we, um, picked up items that were not rendered by him. It'd been that he didn't know those were items that we required. The shelving was one of them. And because the shelving was in the actual business, whether it was his personal shelves or whether it's missing shelves, they were under that room, and we had to pick those up. If those are not to be rendered, those are not to be assessed, they'll have to be moved to another portion of that. Those are all requirements that we have, and we get audited. They come behind us and audit what we find.
Now, putting words in Mr. Ginnings' mouth, speaking, he talked a minute, but I just wanted more to understand. I think when we left last time, you were requesting either Class B or Class C on the home. So I don't remember a brief, okay. So, uh, if, if it were a Class B or C, what kind of, would that, but it obviously makes a significant difference.
Yeah, Class C would affect your square footage for the heating and air. Um, but based on his square footage, based on his type of payment, and based on the units that we put in required by the Department of Revenue, I can't change his to the B. And we all know because the auditors came behind me at one time. And we had a Class 1, and they noticed that we did that. They said we didn't have it Class 4. If y'all make me reply soon, you'll have to put your name because my auditor behind me, I'm not going to fail because I request a new direction. We changed it before, learned my lesson.
So do y'all have any questions? I already think I have to get off to it. Mr. Ginnings, your, your email for you.
Few things to, we've covered last time, is actually issues uniformly throughout the state. And that means my home, anywhere in the state, would have exactly the same tax, no matter who the assessor is. So I just put this up here. Today seems a good day for you guys to test your whole departments. And hopefully I can be compelling with what I see far as the class of my home and some other issues with taxation in regards to my property. You guys are the checks and balances. So if anybody sets a tax, you represent the community. I'm asking you to take also a share of information on the thing today. Can I take part with what classification should be at my home? And what we need to determine. Henry, does everybody, all the tax assessors need exactly the same corporate name across the entire state? Okay, it's not different for different set of, you need to tell me.
Different years that they're putting in for this day. They have a four-year cycle.
Have you read the assessor's name?
Sorry, I'm going to answer questions here today. I did the presentation.
I would love an answer. Do you have a problem with answering that?
Sorry, I'm the attorney for the board. And I, my job is not free. I can pick what I want to read. And as far as the manual votes, I haven't read it, and I'm not going to answer questions.
Appreciate that. Thank you. So how many classes are there in the main? There's 21 different classes. Every one of those classes affects what you think per square foot. These are the classes. Henry already mentioned that. You can see every one of those numbers. You can see every one of those numbers ends up being multiplied by your units. Price per square. Henry, what are the three main items to look for in a classified home?
I don't know what you mean by three main.
When you're going out to classify a home, one of the three main things to look at is, you have to think there might be an assessor's manual going down. The assessor's manual, three main things to look at.
I think she discussed earlier, I'm here in my building, I've been in the assessment office now for thirty-three years.
I'm gonna get to that.
I think that she also addressed this earlier in her presentation when she was describing how she came with policy A. For your house, we look at the red lines, we look at the way the bricks are laid, we look at the overall look of the house. Two-story house, story, one-story flat line, one roof, two roofs, gable hill, how many times to concept roof. So there's your answer to that, that's what we do, we pull up, we get an idea right then, we assess the house. We go by the guidelines of the Department of Revenue.
Sure, okay, thank you. So the order of matters, have you need to read the assessor's manual? And originally, okay, so one of the things you do is you actually, here the system of checks and balances in each account on taxation. So you knowing the assessor's manual, information in it can be very helpful. But I think right now, a good time to review a few things from the assessor's manual. So, first of all, three things to look for in classifying home directly from the assessor's manual. Quality of design, here you'll see workmanship. Yes, right in the assessor's manual, the very first three things, not move by what we see in the drive up, but.
Like the roof line, that's our material.
Those are parts of it, but this is specifically called down in the assessor's manual, these three things. Not based on accident, I'm a homeowner or relation to others. I'm doing here. Quality. Really, what is quality of design? Pretty subjective when you enter about you, about you. Hard to find a very good answer to quality of design because it's very specific to each person. You might like a pair of boots, you might like a pair of shoes, you might want a Ferrari, you might want a three-kid. Quality of each of those is definitely very subjective to what you're really looking for. But that's a bit subjective, and that's the very first thing to look at in the assessor's manual. Now, quality of materials, I think we all agree with that. Concrete, steel, stone, lumber, brick, those are all quality materials for building a home. We all agree that most homes in Union County are built using those ingredients. So most homes are going to be quality homes. However, the next one is the real kicker, the workmanship. This one we can't quantify quality, we can take photos of it, we can look at it. This is all part of classifying a home. So, as you see here, this particular job site that I pulled up, it has the post convenient. And one thing with quality, it's not just the work being done, it's twenty years down the road, what's the result of that? Did it hold up, did it survive, did it fall apart? So it's not just minutes, but for years down the road, how well is it? Look very long to discuss that last time. My home has fifty feet right down the middle, there's no post convenient. Matter of fact, all the choices I say they smile, they're all bad. I'll show you a video of that. So, overall, the one thing that's very easy to see, the quality of workmanship. My home, originally when it was built, was very good. So we, we went through the classifications already, Henry explained that to us, what this did show us is class D. Your class, nothing special, nothing amazing, but it's also based not just on, we drive up and looking at the workmanship as well. Class A homes, this is directly from the assessor's manual. You can see these structures are built high quality, especially the period, craftsmanship is very good. Architecture supervision, building of this type far surpasses building codes. That's something we're gonna look at with my home. This class A home we looked at, you notice the ninety-six point nine eight cents? That's per square foot, it was built in two thousand nine. And I think everybody here knows that's five floors here for the build quality and workmanship of my home, question about. Class B, main thing I wanted to add, and again, this is directly from the assessor's manual. Foundations and framing conform to good engineering practices. Nobody in the history of time has said it's a good engineering practice, but a load bearing wall over thin air. Not how it works, I think most of you agree with that. It's really slow, weak, not that much. So class C, these are better standard structure. Materials are generally better than standard quality and workmanship is a skilled, a skilled nature. Buildings of this classification will meet or exceed building code as part of this classification study. Class D, this represents, and they're quality structures in value. This is defined in the assessor's manual, this is exactly how it shows you. Now, interestingly enough, when you look through the assessor's manual, larger homes start off less expensive per square foot. And that's basically because you're buying a home. So you can see here, there's a nineteen percent difference from a five hundred square foot home down to a three thousand square foot home. So they're telling you the state is banding that larger homes are actually less expensive as a base. How many floors, how many windows, how much money the person makes, shape of windows, none of that's used in classified homes. We've seen this photo before, the blue lines, that's where the support structure goes down to the ground in my home. The red line is where the load bearing wall is, right smack in the middle of all the floor doors. So what has happened over time, those floors were still static, and static, and static. This is not quality construction. This is not a construction that would be an example of A B C. All of us call that snap for sure, he even called out passing codes. So when I bought my home, that's how it was supported. A lot of us, all of us, this is not under the load bearing wall. Fun times, that little crawl space that I get to go through, I spent many, many hours in the lab. Eight inches wide, twenty-seven inches tall, I crawl through there with the chair and every kind of. Things I've had to do to re-support my home. Make it so one fall down, I actually had to broken joints under that load bearing wall that I had to fix. She had to add a lot of piers, a lot of footings, a lot of support. Just in hopes of bringing the house back up to normal. Unfortunately, I wrapped that in there, it's worth I'm all my inspiration, sorry about that ugliness. Interestingly enough, this section right here was so heavy when I put the bricks under it. It got it three quarters of an inch from being a lot of. And that's just the brick, when I left the weight down, how heavy it is. Quality of, that's not there, it's not perfect. More things that I've worked on and put in, you can see the, the one filler in the back with the, the, um, mortar, that was original, everything was not worked, I had to put in this deep house and sink. The main wall from falling down, more work back down, more of the jacks that under there. The load bearing wall, I'm still pushing up slowly. Um, unfortunately, where I'm pushing in the middle of those joints, and you can see a video there in a moment, like the original piers. And then rock, and because the joint smiles and floats over the top of the original. The more work that I'm doing trying to level, build quality, these are gas lines laying in the ground of the home. Assess the build quality. Now, these are kind of fun, it's kind of hard to see, but I added these little metal piers so I could slowly adjust the house up. Because if you go too far, too fast, things don't really work out well for you. Those have been under there now for years. I'm slowly moving the house up on that load bearing wall, trying to get it where it belongs. Trying to bend the wood back to where it belongs. TJ, you've worked a lot of homes, a lot of pillars and irons underneath there, right? The photos you've seen so far, but you're in working with this quality of work. How was the vision there? Over the little big years ago, I would probably oppose standard criteria from nobody in the world. Building, load bearing wall, it's not, expect that to hold up. Engineering practices have been around as much as one hundred years, I wholeheartedly agree. So a lot of things have been added here, just to get the house up to where it belongs. This is fun, so the header, small white pieces of header, and then if you look here, wood, the ground concrete, you don't do that now. That, that's quality of build. And when you have a header that's pretty beams wide, and then little pieces in the middle of it, needs to be a continuous piece of metal between irons or piers. But that's the quality, build quality, and this is much, much newer by the way, that was two thousand twelve, that was them. And then, like I said, the pier, that's the original pier, you can see the jacks there, and watch this, this was yesterday. And that used to hold the house up, but the beams are so bent, the joints are so bent. That when I hit that load bearing wall close to where it belongs, they're floating, there's actually three of those piers. But I can go and do that under my home, that covers over twenty-one feet of space, because everything was built so poorly. And just more of the joints to cut for a drain to go in, don't do that. Here over the window top, you put in lintels, which is that, it's a very new section of my home, there's no lintel presence, that's build quality. And then electrical things, the new section of my home, this bar right here. That bar on the sub patio, that's not a code, you always remove that bar. If it was the main panel, you'd leave that, so you have to pass code, you could be part of these classifications. More electrical stuff, two irons under one load, you don't have to pass code. This particular one, part C, but I have small wire running to a larger amperage, you know, you don't do that for permits. So I had to replace some things there. This one I actually got back when I first got home, that one you can see that it's, the heat was getting to the wood. And burned down the home, that's not gonna work very well, you can build quality. More build quality things, you would on all of these electrical lines, and there's probably a dozen. Didn't have a plant plug to hold them, so they get cut by the cabinetry, electrical issues. More build quality, gas pipe, goes to the side of the unit, that cuts, that goes to the house. Now, ER requires a tax assessor to revalue my property once, at least once every four years. ER also requires that when somebody, the assessor, is revaluing my property, that they have basic knowledge of construction. And they also take accurate recordings of everything all the way. The dimensions of the building, however, that information's not right, the property record card will not be accurate in my tax, we can get accurate. Or the supervisors, Henry, there. Henry, how many people built the house from the ground? Do you have any? Is, do you like that? Those people, well, from the ground, doing their work all the way through, that entry, plumbing, stuff, you name it, I did. Right, so I have a pretty good idea what these are. So, there was a question, has to have a praise versus assessed. Do you look on our property record card? It clearly says praised in one section, and it clearly says assessed in another section. How did that work out, Henry was kidding to this? A home with praised with a value of a hundred thousand dollars and no homestead, have fifteen percent in class in the home, is going to be fifteen thousand dollars assessed. We flip that math around, an assessed value of thirty thousand dollars of people are praised home two hundred thousand. Et cetera, assessed value of three hundred thousand dollars of people are praised two million. That's four appraisals, due in January. Due in July, that's for this year. As was mentioned, twenty twenty-four was a little lower than twenty twenty-three. I know. I know. Not five percent difference, that was kind of implied. This is the one that blows my mind, I brought this to divorce in two thousand. I received this email from Henry that said, assessed value, not praised, of my shop went from that to that. That means that particular appraisal of my home, five million, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. One person in the room should know the praise and assess the whole, the difference between. I received this email. I thought, how would that someone just start to have that before? You're fully aware of the incentives there, that equates over ten thousand dollars a month in tax. Third appraisal, put in seven hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred six. Sure, we're getting good at this now. So the fourth appraisal, twelve days later, increased the price of my home, ninety-eight thousand dollars for all payments. All from the same assessor. That's concerning. Cost of my home when I bought it was seven hundred forty thousand. Here in Union County, the average price lower than zero was about twenty-seven percent. Number of homes I've looked at, I believe now, about forty different homes. Added it up, took the average to twenty-seven percent lower. My home came in higher by a significant amount in all four of those appraisals. There's my home, hundred and three dollars per square foot. Almost a hundred and three. We saw another home built much, much newer, I guarantee, with much greater quality. Note the definitions of the class now that are applied, classifying my home with the assessor's manual, like class D. Quality of build. I think it's funny, not the quality of build, very well, any questions on the quality of build?
I've got two questions, sure. Hold on, is your home, is your home today classified any differently than it was when you purchased that home?
It is.
It was not a class, I think it was a class B and was a class A?
It was a B.
And I'd say, or the, you could have changed.
When was it in my mind?
Two thousand and eight, two thousand thirteen, it might, and that has been dropped from the records and out of the plot.
Well, we can pull up the history file.
Well, we can pull up the history file.
I have a photo, if you'd like to see.
When I added it, it moved up to class. When he, when I did the addition.
This one.
It made it up, a portion from day minus nine.
Right, so it was like, when you purchased the property and whatever year it was, it was like, I'm sure you tested, checked back toward the.
No, you know, I just learned about the classifications, like the class B. So I was like. I wonder about it, but I'm sure you looked at what the tax was. You're going to play on a half or before you purchased. I looked at what the opposite was in a trust. And I understood, I'm trust made taxes, well, I was told that you said higher, not being married. That's what I was wondering.
So it was like when you moved, it's like, uh, doesn't change like. Were you aware of any of the construction related issues with that house prior to purchasing the house? Did you have a discussion?
I was in Grandma's. Was aware of the one little video, so I could not crawl underneath that little space because of all the pipes that were above, they were just fire. So I had to look around and then I honestly thought, we walked through the house, there was a lot of sand. Okay, I'll be in the house, I built my own. We're in this city, been here a while, I can adjust that. Got under there and were like, whoa, there's nothing under load bearing walls that I can drop. In the, uh, you know, the inspection, they never said load bearing wall.
You did have a third charge and it was like, there's one off, that's why I can purchase. Is it normal perceived for the assessors office in Union County or any other county to go underneath the crossface of any structure?
We did not say the interior or the crossface.
But that does not like.
I'm sure that the charts that the Department of Revenue have provided for us, they take into consideration those factors because our conditioning of this house is a seventy percent. And that is part of what factors into depreciation, the problems that he says his house has now. That is already factored in.
There's a partner that was.
It is a partner. And any pride. And you said it, it has been this way for thirty years and it's never been questioned. We did, Mr. Gaddings has been in our office, you can see a lot of slides that we have from the assessor's manual. He's been in our office, we've got numerous emails, we've made copies for him of his property and some other properties. He's picked out things that sure do affect him, but it's not things that the assessor's office.
However, in.
It could have been the building inspector from the CD, but we haven't assessed until the building inspect, inspector in the CD tells us if they have passed the checks. You have when the building inspector, the head assistant applies.
I can tell you said that I have said.
Uh, it would have been failed to look for the code inspector from the CD.
And this question, was it built in the city of town?
Since you want to try.
What makes you say that?
I mean, look.
What's the difference? So whether or not the inspector would crawl under the home, but I, as a homeowner, in our neighborhood, I am allowed to submit this information to the board. You now know this, it's real, it exists. You know classifications, what are your requirements are for each class? I'm not asking you too much, I'm making a call, it's true. My home, the build quality classification system. I keep going here, not quite there, so, um. The next one is that appreciation scale. And based on the four wildly different appraisals that I received in eight months. I'm requesting that we go with the state provided, not the observed. I have questions about the observations of this category, especially when you have millions of dollars difference assessments. That seems concerning. I hope you guys understand how concerning that can be. That would put me at point four seven, not seventy percent. This is provided by the state, yes.
Okay, but also you're saying appreciation of class B home at forty-seven percent.
Well, I.
You're right, but if you are at A home, what is your condition on that chart?
It's just a little bit higher, so you go over here, it's point six one. It's not an A.
And we're at seventy, and in our office with a server, if the Department of Revenue comes behind me and audits me and says, okay, you're at seventy, the chart says sixty, but you're within a range. And I can see that this house is not appreciated as fast as the state says that it would appreciate. That is where we use observed condition.
And I've given you a lot of observed condition, but the.
But I can't see inside.
I have just told you that initially, you have seen under the wall, that is my home, that's true, and actually those loads are they. Yes. So that gives you a, now, um. Subject there. Observe. Four assessments, eight months.
Because you requested something different, every time.
Very. Over four million dollars, that brings into question those observations. I did not request, matter of fact, the last appraisal into my home on an asset was ten, no, I saw you on video.
I'm not, that was.
I feel that's usually a little, a courtesy call, it's usually done, especially after your fourth time. So now, the law states that having apartment, you must have a medical or a piece to occupy. That's the law necessary. The use of the term apartment for that space I derived, is meaning in actual, matter of fact, the property record card is called the payment. Your house is not rented. Chandler has mentioned that a TV and a couch qualify some of it as an apartment. Which means everybody here has a TV and a couch to move. Now you're charged fifteen percent. Exactly what you said. Here's what I believe my house is, that there's no apartment in that perhaps. The acreage is actually wrong, five point five eight, based off of the survey, um. The home city did actually give some homes that are in shock, I wasn't sure you were going to do that, appreciate that. And as you can see, do the acres you choose, there are no, on the board for the appraisals. Do you think we need to go with the estate providing appreciation? And I've made up what it should be. And then in Freeport House, uh, Freeport Warehouse, I do qualify for Freeport Warehouse, I see many warehouses. I have no problem doing this. It's any little section where they have their inventory that qualifies. Can you enter the same room? I'm more than happy to do that, and I think my business does qualify for that. Then of course, the nurse you spoke about, I think we should remove the, the inventory off there completely. I wouldn't have to put that in. And then the overlap on the shelf, et cetera. I'll move that, that's not a problem. That makes the personal property act to eighteen thousand three. Any questions? Hey, do you have any concerns about whether the house itself qualifies for home sale?
The house?
Yeah.
Whether it qualifies for home sale. I'm done.
Is he getting home sale?
He is getting home sale, even though there's a question regarding that. I have made that decision as the assessor, that he can qualify. That's his name on the day, time is on the home sale exhibition. I've overlooked the fact that there are three ones, three of them. He has a Mississippi. Brady, and I've been mumbled that as a married, so it looks as if two families were in that.
But you do.
But I've been a bit of that. But the general assessment was a home sale.
And ten percent only in apartment?
And this is.
This is not in apartment.
That is the only way we're called in our class for two weeks, we're getting in class, and you attended the two week assessor class?
Two weeks of law?
Yeah, I probably have heard of lots of laws.
Okay, that's, it's not a part, there's no rental agreement.
We are trying, that is how we document on our property record card, that it is considered an overall apartment because that's the description provided by the state.
Definitions of what apartment says it must be, so you're going to have to.
I'm not charging you as a class two, I'm charging you as a class one, and then this part of your residence that own our part, it's notified, garage apartment, so we don't know what portion of that building we are required to.
Do you know the measurements?
I don't know off the top of my head, it's not my home.
You, you just.
I don't know off the top of my head, I've raised lots of homes since the Friday I come in.
So as for, something needs to be done. A lot of information I brought, and we have, till the next meeting, we did this, but. How do you perceive?
Um, can I make a point of one of the things Mr. Gaddings addressed was they, um, his home, no matter where it is in Mississippi, with a tax system like. But we have a four-year sales ratio index of, and is required by every county in Mississippi. But our index is not the same as the federal Mississippi index. Our index is not the same as where Fayette County, Mississippi. That is how they key. Taxes equalized throughout the state is because we're required to do that study to come up with our index. That index is applied to the pricing of his home. So no, his home would not be taxed the same way in other counties, Texas, Texas, New York, or New England because of the index.
I have a question on that. In the fact, some of my home, would it generally be higher or lower?
I don't understand what I would have done. I don't know what their index would be. They would go by the same guidelines that I have to go by.
That puts in there.
Exactly, but that is a guideline, that is the main habit part of an assessor's job. So they would take the same house that I have in their channel and they would apply.
I've looked at numerous homes in what they, I mean, I've set those channels.
And we looked at those. He didn't want us to look at those, a lot of those were class S, that's not the level of case.
Did you think I hit that sort of model?
I thought they were class Ss, so I think.
There was one S, the rest were teams, A pluses. The price per square foot for those homes ranged from ninety-four dollars per foot to ninety-seven dollars per foot. That's concerning, that's a totally different market. So you just said, the board members, nobody drives out Highway six?
Awesome.
Hold on, excuse me. We drive out Highway six, and you look up to the hillside, and there's those beautiful houses, there's winners. That's the homes I'm referencing, those homes are much nicer, much nicer, cheaper per square foot than my home. It is one S there. But that's what I, so I'm done with my presentation, my question to the board. What do you?
I was going to say that the square foot cost that is required is also part of that segmentation index study that we participate in, and they're about to say in our office, usually.
Right, and when I put the price in my home, it's seven hundred twenty thousand. It sat vacant fifteen years or longer. I think that's a pretty good indicator of value of the home. And there's Zillow here in Union County, Zillow's one hundred percent lower than. Or no, the actual appraisal for twenty-seven percent, oh, Zillow, and Zillow was lower than that. Zillow's a nationally recognized program, and they have a lot of.
In August of twenty twenty-three, when Mr. Gaddings wrote his questions before us, he also emailed me his appraisal from his purchase. And his appraisal shows a hundred and forty dollars per square feet on his appraisal, we're way down a hundred and two dollars.
And that's the sales price appraisal, which are well over the tax assessment, you can look.
That's a big bump for them, that's a big difference.
That's not.
So that's kind of what this study has provided for me.
Okay, I think I'm done, I just got again, but with the chance to board, there needs to be an answer, and I need to be included in that, which is my home, my property. And Jazz, you already made a decision with that. I hear no, that was a whole.
Now, actually, my stance on it is, Tamara's tax assessment, Frank Chandler has reviewed this one completely, and I'm going to go with Mr. Tamara's lead. I'm like, I'm like. I was trying to explain. Consider that, before you find out, I, uh, I, I, I. Rips out of waste registry, rips out of waste, and take the lead. I like wash. Guy has been tried, authorized in front of loans for a severe fund in March down north, such a part one, for grants and centuries to be reimbursed, ARC, right, Bruce. Tell me. See. That. Indian on, uh, motion period. Authorized county engineer to advertise a deal O G P D free project, get up, start the office. Thank you. Hey. Office clerk, motion period. Authorized county engineer to advertise for March down north, ARC. Comets, one one three eighty-three. Most around, so five eighty-three. Most of my, so five eight three.
Motion, sir.
Steve, officer. Obviously. It's got speeds for Allen, Judy, Allen, Cee's, about to. I like how much I take that out there. Second, I've got some, uh, literature from the Sheriff's Association, as I, our lady, thank the cross state. Uh, where probably, I haven't got it all figured out yet. Looks like probably we're gonna be uh, below average on what we charge. Yes, sir. Like, we're thirty-five, lots, 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 or fifty, fifty-five, forty-five, so, uh, we are on the lower end, so, glad. Where you're taking on higher college, on, on the, on that. You, I was actually, we had done, you know, a little bit of art question. But, 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 you will see. Uh, how would I, that's, obviously. Proven of federal authorization, Randy White.
Motion, sir. Thank you.
And, officer. Authorized, free rivers, and solid waste building. Two more. Oh, I'm putting my, say that. Also, Randy White's under consistent prosecution.
Motion.
Motion for speed.
Thank you.
That's for Randy. Officer, please. Obviously. Authorized, free rivers, and solid waste building, park, doors are co-recorded, accordance, this is a park.
Thank you.
Motion for Ted.
Thank you.
That's for Randy. Officer, please. Obviously. That's true, sir. Proven of status, potential clerk, Miami, like, article. Well, what? CJ?
Sorry.
That's for CJ. Officer, please. Obviously. Yeah. Proven of inventory deletion, three shots.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's for CJ. Thank you. Obviously. Proven of second place, direct force, access, parking.
These are the final resolutions that we have, um, send the certification saying they certify what is. I saw this presented to the board, and I just sent the resolution, saying yes, we, this will be agreed to. And they send it back, and so we have the, common as a final resolution.
You're just afraid that that's.
Motion. Obviously. Obviously. That's for CJ. Thank you. Obviously. Certain parts, proven of fight, certain parts.
Take it under, bud. Make a motion.
Obviously. That's right. CJ. Officer. Obviously. Great, this is CJ. Proven of open ward, that course, the bad stuff.
Certainly, it's concerned more that they have, this is something they need to go down through.
The sheik, yeah, quote from Peter's bar, it was good, all those, all those certifications. Uh, we've lost several dive reviews, uh, job changes and stuff, that nature, obviously reimbursed, or the home, home management, or whatever. Maybe, and all that stuff. And like, what do you mean, maybe? I like all of this side by side, you're telling me. I like what you said. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's for Randy, officer. Obviously. Proven of inventory deletion, cell phone.
Motion, sir.
Thank you.
Randy, sir. There, officer. Obviously.
I'm sorry. Well.
Officer. Proven of continuing mercy, decoration, all of them, I feel, I watch two things.
I'm sorry.
Motion for speed. That's for CJ, officer. Here.
You may, or that's what it takes.
It was a study, sent this right there, and we're gonna. So, then, one, all of this place will be done. And I was prepared to make a little bit of that, you know. I just, so.
I'm there, I just, it's somewhere.
They sent it right there, and it's got to run forward, or something, or not.
It's on the small, I think, I was smart.
We're, most of them.
Motion, the same one. But everybody's got their evening. You got your evening, you got your. You got it in half of this shit, and I'll stay even, I think that's. Uh.
My motion, proven. That's.
Thank you.
Motion, hand it for a second. Officer, please. Move, walk. Uh, me and my school, thirteen fifty-three, found by Chris. Actual purchase of Chris's simple flats.
Thank you, sir.
Good day, officer. Yeah, making, making positive for increase. Remember using increase.
Motion. Pass.
I'm ready.
Sir.
Please, officer. Obviously. Proven of kids are being served.
Motion.
Speed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Officer, motion, please. I would say, y'all, now. It's like, you're, like, it's like, it's like, I'm trying to, like. Thank you, buddy.
Yeah.
All right. Proven of full time involvement, taking bills, and most apartment.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Any, sir, please, officer. Obviously.
We're gonna be doing. And on that.
Sheriff's Department, that's the minimum, sheriff's budget, I'm preaching certain measures, decrease in others. I don't know, I got, was the scene today, sir. Hand it off, please. Obviously. Proven of federal authorization, Christopher, full time, this last year, and one more, thank you. Awesome.
Thank you, sir.
Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Here. Proven of open chances, round trade, we leave that one, one to Sheriff's Department.
Motion.
See?
Thank you.
That's for Randy, officer. Obviously. Proven of empty coordination, red two thousand sixteen, course, go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Say that, officer. Obviously.
Hey, while you're on Sheriff's Department, I mentioned the, uh, increase or decrease, or stay in the same room, housing prisoners for this house, with, in the county. Like, one, little quick thing for you, roll around, and, and for the lawyers, uh, while you, uh, do a study on that, is, uh, at which time, does a city prisoner become a county prisoner, okay? Uh, it used to be in the past that you arrest an individual or a family, and today, uh, they go to justice court, get to justice court, judge, sign a warrant. And they say, as soon as that county judge has signed the warrant, then he was county prisoner, I think. So, nobody knew any effort, nobody questioned it, nobody studied, whatever. That's just the way it was, so if he was in jail for three, four weeks, or longer, and he was only being charged that one day, the city was only being charged that one day, uh, when he may have stayed long. So, now, there's been discussion that he stays a city, and like, city prisoner until he's by, by granted, so we don't have to go over here. So, if he, you know, gets, uh, arrested three days after the spring grand jury, they charge him until he's indicted in the October grand jury. I think they had a, uh, attorney general's opinion.
Yeah, I think I've written one.
And I don't know if it's if it's, if that even is the case.
No, I think that's what it'd be, I've got that in pool, but this couple of years ago, something came up, and I had to look into this. And I, I've got one pool, and I think it's exactly what you just said, Jerry, but I'll double check.
So I think that y'all need to consider, we need to make that part of whatever agreement, if we say, we're gonna stay thirty-five, we're gonna go forty, forty-five, fifty, hundred, whatever, if we do contract with the city of Blue Springs, the city of Merton, and the city of New Orleans, that, that that be in there, that, well, I don't even know if that should be in there if it's law, that, that you're gonna be charged, uh, every day that he's, and uh, you know, our people, so, uh, I, I would like to know, and I know the government, so, is that, is that right?
I think it is, I would.
I think it is, so.
But like, this is major, so y'all, uh, they're always in cities, and, you know, they're there.
So, after conviction, you know, whatever, but, uh, you know, we need to be, to know, to say, oh, this guy's in jail fourteen days, he's having a chest pain. Uh, city workers are coming to get you, man, like, about your way. And, and vehicles, so, back it up.
Right, um, with my advice, what would the board do?
Yeah.
That is all. I would approve of, I would approve of what you're saying.
We can't edit out when it comes to number of challenges, it's, it's, we can't edit out the second, um, or anything else.
So, when is it just?
Tyler, like, to the next meeting, the house, you have the numbers that change from today, from when you were, um, listening to that table.
What are we, we're wanting, uh, how approval to.
You take on the.
Yes, we have to go back and put those number of practices in the system, so we can. And you had that payoff just born, and you have to go back and put those numbers.
End of the list.
They would motion, right, in a second. On the paper, obviously.
That was the only, you know, for cause, they're doing one of those offers, or she would have had to do their payoffs.
All right. Proven of positions for the.
And if you do the, the lease, you know, the whole.
Uh, condition.
Yeah, dude. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I could, why do you give me start down my day, and I want you to do that, you know?
And thanks, petitions for renotions, for things, so he's eligible for class one, eligible for each county, um, a pro, a business that closed, that had not notified us, so we changed that.
Being on the class day.
Then you go to class day.
All right. Motion.
Okay.
Not ready.
And like, all of them together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, buddy. Of. We got one, say the session.
Okay, only six.